Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of Monday, August 16th, 2021. I will call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. I'd like to hear a roll call, please, if those in attendance. Carol, do you want to start?
Carol Hofstra is present.
Julie Byers is present.
Mike Barosko present.
Laura Schifrin present. Also, Beth Faxon is here. Our staff and Chaz, welcome to our meeting this evening. I think that is all that's on, right? We're going to skip 1.3 this evening and give Beth a week to catch up.
Thank you.
If that is okay with everyone.
I wondered if I could just add something under 1 point. Is it possible?
Sorry, I stepped, I went to 1.3 and forgot 1.2. Okay, 1.2. Now, a couple of things. One, Beth had added some late documents just a little bit ago, and that was from MRPC, is that correct? Okay. It's data for the master plan?
It's updated data, yeah.
So, and also Lance was not able to be with us this evening, and I was wondering how the board felt about having a work session meeting next Monday night and inviting the Master Plan Committee to join us. And that will be the only thing our meeting will be for, will be for, not before. I'm getting tired, I think. But how does everyone feel about that? Are you able to do that for next Monday, the 23rd, at like 6:30?
I think I could do that, Laura.
I can.
Michael?
I should be able to.
Okay. And we'll get ahold of Lance and see if he can do that. I think that our other two work sessions were really productive, and all of that information was sent along to the Master Plan Committee as well as MRPC. And yes, as well as that, and we may look at that tonight in work session, the comments from the building inspector regarding zoning. And then we can go more into that next week if the board would like to do that. So that is getting us a meeting with MRPC, was there, excuse me, with the Master Plan Committee. Was there something else that you wanted to add under additions or deletions where I already deleted the minutes?
Yes, thank you. And this was just something that I had, it happened right before I went on vacation, but the Townsend Housing Authority admin came up and asked me to see if we, at the Planning Board, could meet jointly with the Townsend Housing Authority. And the purpose of the meeting is that basically they're looking to introduce the consultant who is writing the housing production plan. And there would be, basically, they're inviting the Planning Board for some discussion. I guess you're on the ground floor with getting going with the consultant, is that right?
Yeah, I actually, I actually gave them a tour for about an hour and a half last week. Yeah, and I surprised myself as to how much history I could tell them in my 45 years here. It's not like I'm a townie or anything, so, but yeah. All ready, people?
So would that be something that you would want to discuss later in the meeting, or would you like to have a date? I mean, I just left it that I gave the Jody our meeting dates for the Planning Board. But, you know, alternatively, the Planning Board could go to the Housing Authority meeting too, to meet jointly. So I didn't know how you wanted to handle that.
I'm sure we're going to have an update this coming Thursday at 7:00 PM is when the Housing Authority is meeting. I don't know if they're going to be in attendance, do you? If the company will be in attendance as an update, you know if they're on?
I think she's talking to you, Chaz.
Okay.
I was talking to you, Beth, but
Oh, me? No, Thursday at 7:00 PM is a Townsend Housing Authority meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so I can tell you that we're not point posted jointly for that. So I haven't reconnected with Jody since I've been back from vacation. And so we're sort of circling in on a date because I know the Planning Board would want to be in attendance for that discussion, right? So I just don't know.
How are others on the Planning Board with Thursday evenings at 7:00? Is that an issue or not? 7:00, 7:30, we have our preliminaries, and then usually 7:15 or 7:30 is when we have whoever might be an appointment for the meeting. Any comments?
I can probably do most Thursdays at that time, Laura.
Yeah, generally.
Okay, well, just hearing that, it's not, we could possibly post for, let me talk to Jody tomorrow, Beth. And I'll get back to you with what the planning is.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great idea. They were quite enjoyable. And I did send him some information that I could, that was on the Realtor side. It wasn't quite in the format that he was looking at, looking for, and I don't know how to do it, how he might want it. So I haven't had a chance to call him back because I was going to go part of last week, so.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do that, we'll take it from there. Anything else under that 1.2?
Oh, one more thing, sorry. In correspondence, I, we did, the board received the Attorney General's approved bylaws from 2021 Annual Town Meeting. They have been approved by the Attorney General, and the bulletin is in the correspondence folder under 3.6, so that would be.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going into work session. And are you going to screen share with us?
I certainly can. Yeah, what would you like shared?
Well, I know that under 2.1, do we have an update from the Master Plan Committee?
No, they're not meeting until Friday. So nothing has come in. However, you know, as mentioned, the Building Commissioner did add a few comments. If you want to review those, I can put them on the screen. He added, I think he made like six different comments.
Why don't we do that? Is the board agreeable to that? I'd like to hear what he had to say. I know that that was one of Lance's concerned as well as well was the zoning chapter. So if you can share that, that would be great.
Sure, I'll go and find it. Did we accept the minutes from last week?
No, we're not doing minutes tonight.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry. No problem.
Yeah, I just, I deleted that under the wrong section.
Okay.
But it's deleted. If we have them for next Monday, we'll address them so we don't get too far behind.
Okay. Okay, so Hartley, did you allow me to screen share? I didn't notice.
Ah, yes, we're all set.
Oh, thank you, okay.
Thank you, Hartley.
Okay. And
Right to his.
Just going to do this for now, I'm sort of out of here so I can give you a little more room. All right, so these are the comments that Eric sent in today, Building Commissioner. Let me open them up. I'm sorry. Okay. This one, I mean, you can go ahead and read them, or I can read, however you want to do this, but he did add this comment. Can you see it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, good point. We don't need redundancy, for sure. Okay, and then the next one is, I agree with defining terms of and reviewing parking. Oh, there's another interesting one.
Yeah.
I've been reading up on that lately.
Uh huh, right.
Downtown Commercial District. All areas of Townsend, not indicated on the maps as being commercial or industrial or zoned residential. This would imply that the commercial districts are not residential. This should be clarified. Yeah. Okay, good point. On that as well. If somebody has a comment other than what I'm saying, please chime in. This is under work session, nothing formal. And then Beth, I think we had your comments.
This one? This is another one he put.
Oh, oh, sorry.
This is a new one here.
Changing the places by right would also remove oversight from the zoning board to the Planning Board through the site plan review.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
You want to make any reply? I mean, I can certainly tag it into here.
I would, where we've said good point so far, I would say that that means we're in consent, you know, consensus with the zoning official.
Okay. Yes, I could add that in.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
And if you wouldn't mind, once this is once we've reviewed just this this evening, if you would send that to Lance.
Oh, yeah.
Because he was in particular interested in the zoning chapter.
And there was a couple more comments down here. Okay, here's another one.
Okay.
Accessory housing comment.
In favor of removing the requirement to renew accessory dwellings every five years, but not to allow for accessory dwellings by right. Requiring people to remove an accessory dwelling is impractical, of course. And if the unit has been in existence for five years without creating a nuisance, then it should be safe to say it is most likely will not become one. I see. Well, that's interesting. Chaz?
That really has a lot to do with the accessory apartment, the affordable accessory apartment as well. You make one change on that, the five the five year is the renewal, is that what he's talking about?
Yeah. And those are not necessarily the affordable. Those were just the accessory apartments that were allowed prior to and had to be renewed every five years.
Right.
And like
And they haven't been tracked for a very long time. So we, when the, we decided that five year was because of that, because it hasn't been tracked.
Yeah. And I think, you know, it's a good thing to reassess every five years because it gives the neighbors and the butters a chance to opine in their neighborhood, you know? Because these are residential neighborhoods.
Okay, so, but he's stating that he's in favor of removing
Yeah.
the five-year requirement to renew.
Right.
On the accessory, I'm not sure, and Chaz, you can kind of clarify if you want. I'm not sure how that is going to affect the 15-year on the affordable. Because removal of the five-year, I don't think affects the affordable units because they, once they're deeded like that, they are like that for 15 years.
But if you remove the five-year, it's going to, part of the reason why we had the five years is to give an option on whether it's going to be an affordable apartment or a non-affordable apartment. Taking off that five years is going to allow people just to automatically go for it, and why have the affordable apartment option on there? That's why we have it on there. At least that's what we were discussing on why we had it on there.
So the affordable, I'm just trying to play devil's advocate here. The affordable okay, just the accessory apartment, after five years, when, or when they renew in five years, they have an option of turning their unit into an affordable unit, but also obtaining the restriction for 15 years.
Correct. But what, again, what's going to happen is somebody wants to put a, an accessory apartment in their dwelling. They have an option on, do they do a non-family related or an affordable? If you don't have a five-year restriction, nobody's going to go for a 15-year deed restriction for an affordable apartment.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. So if we take the five-year off, we might as well, you just might as well throw out the whole affordable part of it. And that's really part of the reason why we have the accessory apartment is to create affordable housing in town.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with why the option was there, but we all know what happened the last time somebody tried to do that. And they went through the zoning, and they came back to the Housing Authority and to the Planning Board.
I think if I may, that might have been under the old bylaw.
Yeah.
So I think that would be addressed.
But how would it be addressed differently?
The new bylaw has verbiage in it about the option for the low-income housing, correct? Or am I wrong there?
No, it does. It's very specific.
Yeah.
Very, very specific.
Yeah, so any new applications will be handled differently than they were.
Was this written based upon the the bylaw that it was or the bylaw that it is? Because I think, I think his comment is the way the bylaws are right now, not the ones that just got approved.
I would agree with you. That's probably what this comment is based on.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
Oh, this has to be updated.
Okay.
Because if this is the 2021 plan, if it makes it this year, then it has to include, or it has to, all comments that are made has to include the bylaws from 2021.
Okay, so what should I write? This comment may be made on the dated bylaw, we don't know. Do you want to make a general comment from the Planning Board?
Reference to the new bylaw.
Okay.
Reference new bylaw. Is that short and sweet enough?
Yeah. And then, yeah, would you like to make a comment about not necessarily in agreement with, you know, the removal of the five-year renewal?
Yeah, you can put, per the new bylaw, we want to leave the option open for affordable housing units.
Well, it's the option of the five-year renewal, right? The affordable units are an option. We'd like to leave in the five-year renewal as is, correct? Is that, am I doing that right?
Yeah, that's what she's saying.
Sorry, I had to take that.
No problem.
Yes. Did I take care of that one?
I think so, yeah.
So the next one, in regards to removing the wording special permit from the site plan reviews, I fully support this and feel it to be imperative. Do not agree that the site plan should be exclusively reserved for by right uses.
Yeah, that's important. I can probably find that in the text. Where is that? Tell me to try to find that in the text. I think it was in the recommendations of the zoning chapter.
Okay, I guess I'm
He didn't put his comments right next to the text, but instead just put them in comments. Zoning, I think it's in recommendations. Does anybody see it? Okay. I don't know where that is. You discussed this one, discussed that one. As a review and revise as of right, some uses currently require special permit. The zoning bylaw differs to discretionary special permits in cases where well-crafted site plan review bylaw could protect the town's interests and send clear signals to developers. Is that what he's talking about right there, do you think? I'm not sure if that comment goes with that. Do not agree that site plan should be exclusively reserved for the by right uses.
Can you ask him, Beth?
Yeah, okay.
I was asking if that's the one that he's referring to. I really don't know that I can decipher
Okay.
what he means.
The, what was it? The recommendation. Okay, and that's that's it from, for right now. He may send in more, but I know today he's doing this as, you know, as he has time, he'll send them in and I'll, you know, try to, and like drops them into the document, so catch him, catch him when we can. He's doing a great job. Yeah, and he's busy right now. So that's that. Is there other other anything else?
There's been nothing that's come back from the Master Plan Committee itself. Our work sessions.
No, I would not expect that. I do believe they're going to meet on Friday, so.
Yeah, with this 8:00 AM, right?
I think it's 8:30, yeah, or, yeah, 8:30 on Friday, and the agenda is posted. I can send that to board members, but it's on the town calendar.
All right. Anybody who wants to chime in, we, anybody on the Planning Board can attend and listen in to their discussion as well. Okay, um, any more comments from anybody on the master plan update? Hearing on 2.2 MRPC update from me. And there was really nothing new at the last meeting. They gave updates from the various grants and funding that they've received and the items that they're doing with the different towns. And Karen was not at the last meeting, so I didn't get any other updates for us. So 2.3 MJTC update from Carol, do you have anything?
The only big thing from that meeting was from here forward, you're going to have to pre-register before the meeting. So you need to go to their homepage and click on the link for registration, and you have to go register, and then they'll send you a link to the actual meeting.
Okay.
So you won't be going, you can't just zoom in like we do tonight. You have to go get registered, and then after that they'll send you.
Great.
Then 2.4 Safe Roots to Schools update, anything on that?
Wait, there'll be a meeting, I believe it's next Wednesday. I've registered for, so I'll be on that meeting next week, the Safe Roots to School.
Okay, great, thank you. 2.5 Implementation Phase 2020 Townsend Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness and Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'm just going to ask the board if they could table that to next meeting. There's not been any progress.
All right. 2.6 MRPC Grants, DLTA and UPWP Program Update. They're like a decoder where we, those of us who are new.
I'm sorry.
Monticent Regional Planning Commission.
Yep.
Just the MRPC, and that's what I'm on, the town belongs to that.
Right.
DLTA usually refers to the grants, and I'm not sure I know what all the, Chaz probably does.
District, local.
Technical assistance.
Technical assistance.
Absolutely, yeah.
See, we share that. And then UPWP.
That's Unified Planning Work Program. That's an annual. Yeah, so that's, you're welcome, yeah. And as far as the UPWP, at the last meeting, we reviewed the maps for the sidewalks and the bike trails, so that's done. I haven't heard anything further from the project lead on our bikeability and walkability study. The, one thing I wanted to ask, Laurie, I did try to get the status reports from the last MRPC meeting to get the status reports from the last MRPC meeting to uh, see what you had, you had noted on the update for the DLTA grant for the master plan maps. I wasn't able to get it. I didn't know, I know you, you thought you would be able to email it to me, but those status reports, there's something there you wanted me to review.
Yeah, I, I thought I forwarded it to you.
Oh, it might have gone in a junk mail or something, but yeah, I hadn't seen it. I'll double check, because I'm still going through my vacation emails, so.
I, um, okay, let me know, I can send that to you. I think I, I may have mentioned the page and section.
Okay, is it something you wanted to bring up right now or 2.6, something that, with regards to that grant? That you wanted to note?
Um, if I did, I don't remember.
Okay.
Or, it wasn't a big, it wasn't a big thing, it was just an update, but I thought.
Okay.
I don't, for some reason, I wanted you to see it.
Okay, all right, I will double check that. So that's that.
Okay, do you want to share the, um, notices?
Yes.
3.1?
Sure. 3.1, a moment please. I'm going to go to Townsend first. All right, so if you guys want to read that or?
You make it bigger.
Oh, sure, yeah, let me go. If I can, I should be able to.
Cause it doesn't.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Uh, should be. Should, I thought I would just be able to click on that.
Just do, uh, do like 125.
Okay.
It should normally work.
Thanks, Mike. Ah, beautiful, you got it, all right.
I do this all day.
Fantastic, so this is, um, as you can see, a public hearing for the planning board, um, it's going to be virtual um, Monday, September 13th at 6:45. And this is for, um, construction of new parking spaces in, um, six, six parking space areas interspersed throughout country states condominium complex at Five Turnpike Road. That application is almost complete, I'm waiting on the site plan, um, and it's ready to be circulated, and I will circulate that to the board, um, as soon as I have everything. And it will be circulated to staff as well, so that's why, um, the hearing is September 13th, to give us time to circulate materials. That is.
When the plan came back, the plan that you're gonna see when it comes back, I'm not sure that it's going to be that much square foot because, um,
Okay.
I think he had, I think he had to eliminate a couple of the spaces, they're not going to be as many as we got from the paving company.
Okay.
So, but he's in here, so, you know, you should have that tomorrow or the next day for sure.
Okay, fabulous, and I simply added up the square footage from the plans that were submitted, so I know it's a rough figure.
Yeah.
All right. And Town of Shirley, public hearing on August 25th. And it looks like it will be in person at 6:00 PM. Yeah, so building with an addition, parking spaces, that kind of thing. Let me go higher here. Lumenberg. So, that's a big warehouse, yeah.
Yeah, wow.
Well, that is already gone by, but some of these were, yeah, that was on the ninth, but we didn't catch it, you know, catch it previously, so. This is our agenda, sorry. I'm sorry, that's tomorrow's agenda. Uh, we can't pass back that. We're going to highlight that. Thank you, Julie. So that's tomorrow. Uh, very good, I'm just gonna fly through. This is basically, yeah, so that's it for the public notices. Right there. Yeah.
Okay.
Fair enough. All right.
So we've already just seen the notice, oh, well, we still have 3.2 Planning Board Member Vacancy Volunteer Response Forms. Um, you, you posted a new posting, right?
I have not yet, I'm going to wait till tomorrow night, um, when Julie, you know, is appointed to a full planning board member, I will post the, I think she'll have to resign officially from her associate member, but, um, I will go ahead and post for the associate planning board member position, um, tomorrow. I mean, Wednesday.
You'll let me know if I have to resign?
I don't think you do, but I will, yeah, I will. So there we are, we'll have that tomorrow. Uh, I'm sorry, Wednesday.
Okay.
And I'm not going to put up her volunteer response form, because it has personal information on it. So we'll go to three.
No, you wouldn't put up the volunteer response form, but, I mean, not somebody's who's filled it out, but, um.
But we're, yeah.
But we're still looking for an associate then after tomorrow.
Exactly.
Okay, so then that's 3.2, now 3.3 is the letter from Beals and Thomas to the planning board regarding stormwater management permit compliant.
Yeah, Reagan, um, from Beals and Thomas followed up on a meeting, um, and sent in a letter. Basically that the, um, detention base in number one is in compliance. So they have, I believe, um, they have been issued occupancy permits by the building department. So right now, uh, they're all set and there is ongoing monitoring, you know, for the stormwater management permit and for the site plan review in terms of, um, reports, vegetative reports, and, and so there is, you know, this is just a confirmation that it was built, you know, correctly. Uh, 3.5. And these I'm not going to put up either, simply because the building commissioners' letters are, um, fairly precise in terms of, you know, I, I put those in for board members, basically. Yeah.
Okay, and then 3.5. Now, I don't know what that is.
That's a lot of reading, so there is a project, um, they, just what it says, proposed well and pumping facilities, the Main Street Well Field. And this is part of requirements for the project, it's an environmental notification form. It's quite lengthy, as you can see, 118 pages, so I mean, I love this kind of stuff, but if you guys want to read it, I just wanted to make sure that you had it available.
Well, thank you for that. So, um, does anyone have anything else to bring before us? That we haven't covered? So our agenda states that our next meeting is tentatively August 30th, 2021. But we are going to now try to hold a little work session Monday, the 23rd. 30, okay, if you could take care of that.
Yes.
I will entertain, unless our illustrious, uh, selectmen would like to add to us. Is there something you wanted to pass along? And no words of wisdom?
I, I got nothing. Um, no, you guys, you guys are doing a great job, I'm, I'm just glad to be part of the process, you know, so keep it up.
Glad to have you, we're glad to have you. All right, well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
And who's got a second?
I will second that.
Okay, I may have a roll call, please.
Carol Hoffs is yes.
Mike Verasco, yes.
Julie Byers, yes.
Laura Schiffin, yes, thank you very much, everybody, thank you heartily. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a good evening, guys.
Thank you.